County Supervisors, Lisa's our county auditor with us today and Bjorn is IT Director. Luanne is our executive assistant. We have Brittany and Mary in the crowd from the media. And we have a very special guest today, Todd Cady. Todd Cady, County Engineer.
Assistant Engineer position.
So, welcome everyone to our meeting and we will call the meeting to order. First on our agenda today is Jayden Tackle, our Jackson County Engineer. Good morning.
Morning. So, what's on our agenda is basically a motion of support for a second raise grant application. So, back in October, the Iowa County Engineers Association reached out about to all the counties about a potential second raise grant application focused on road sites. Not bridges like what our Iron Bridge one that we're currently in the process of. And they had a whole bunch of criteria on what applicable sites or what you had to, what was qualifying. For example, it had to be over a hundred vehicles per day. A detour length which, detour according to the DOTs, I am not just, oh, what's a detour route? There's certain, a definition of what a detour route is. That had to be over two miles. There had to be at least one fatality within the last either three or five years at that site. So, there's other ones and out of all countywide, we have one area that met everything. So, I submitted that. That's the intersection of 308th Street and 395th Avenue, just south of the Bellevue Golf Course where we're actually getting a destination light installed. That was the site that met everything. So, I thought, well, I'll just submit for it and see what happens. Well, I was informed last week at the engineers conference that our site along with, I think there was four other counties' sites that were selected as semifinalists to go to the next round to see if it is eligible or not. And what they need for that is they'd like to see a motion of support from the board. There's a lot of things I've prepared for them with it as a cost estimate of it. Can the project be let by fiscal year 29? What else do I have to do? There's, I have to fill out a questionnaire form. There's a whole bunch of other things that have to get done, but they do like to see a motion of board support on it. And what I would propose for that, not only just that intersection, but the road alignment of 395th is, so when you are traveling eastbound on 308th Street to that intersection of 395th, 395th makes a pretty, I guess I would call it real severe, but a rather severe radius. And it's limited sight distance too, even if there isn't crops in the field through there. And even though 395th is posted, nobody travels it. So, would like to realign some of 395th to be more straight and flatten the hills, if you will, so you can see further, which would get into county by right of way and going through all that process. But I haven't run a cost estimate yet to see what that would all take. And I don't, I really don't know. I hate to throw a number at it right now, but if the cost is super high, I guess another thing with that is they're trying to determine, they question for us counties are what percentage of cost share are you willing to do? Like, they're hoping to do, get funded a hundred percent through the grant.
That would be good.
Yeah. Or could you go, could it be an eighty, twenty, you know, read up to do twenty, which that is an FM road. So, we could, our twenty percent match effect, that's what it would be determined, could be done with FM funds. But I gotta go through all of that stuff and maybe after going through it, it doesn't make sense for us to pursue it anymore. I don't know, but in the event that it would, I guess I'd still like to have the motion for board support on it.
Yeah. I have heard that that intersection, there's a lot of incidents that do not get reported at that intersection. So, probably, I mean, actually that 395th is in need of
Well, and that was another.
substantial repair anyway.
And that was gonna be another part of if we could realign a good portion that would basically be building a new road adjacent or realigning the road. So, some of the old road would go away, but eventually you have to tie into your existing road. So, when you tie it back in, could you then rehab the remainder of it, make it a full project or not just focused on just that intersection, but like you said, alluded to, 395th itself is in need of repair, maintenance, whatever. So, this kind, that was kind of another reason why I submitted this project. It's kind of like, we could fix an issue, fix two issues or one and a half, if you want to call it.
Take their rehab. Much easier, you know? Well, it depends if this gets done, half of it would be already in the projects for this project and the other half would just be.
It depends on how much you realign, I guess, which could realign.
You'd cut out a lot of the rehab or the resurface or the rehab of the existing road if you were putting redo in that corner.
And the thing that gets tricky with this road specifically is to the north of Bellevue Golf Course, like it's similar to 308th Street. Last year that we did, the north end to get out, like back to another route is Level B road. You go, so this, if this road were to be closed, you're forcing everybody up to Level B road, you know, similar to.
To the north.
Yeah. There's no, there's no way like back to Highway fifty-two or anything or another.
Well, it just comes around in a circle on 395th.
Yeah. So, that'd be another thing we have to, if this continues or progresses, what if starting to create plans and all that, how do we get that to all work? Which that can all be figured out, but that would probably get into how far do we take some of this work?
So, you're just.
There's a lot of unknowns here right now because it's kind of been, I was just informed last week and the DOT needs a bunch of stuff for me by tomorrow. So, and obviously last week, Wednesday through Friday was the conference. So, it was, everything's been kind of fast tracked. But I guess the reason I put it on the agenda is to have, hopefully get support to that. If we do, if it does make sense or if it is beneficial to pursue this, we got this part done. Don't need to come back, I guess. But there's a chance it still may not be beneficial or not worthwhile, but that doesn't mean the support that we'd have to.
So, we can pursue without knowing our financial.
Yeah, because we won't even know until, if we, we won't actually know what the actual cost would be. Like, there is a chance, maybe it gets a hundred percent funded, eighty, twenty. We won't know that until this is already so far down the road, down the road.
Sure. You're just looking for a motion of support to.
So, in this motion of support, do you need it to say we're willing to fund up to twenty percent?
No, no.
Or just?
Just a motion of support.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'd second that.
A motion in second to support the possible raise safety grant project as submitted.
And I guess I should make a note, if this does, if we get selected to continue this more than semifinalist, it would be a similar thing where they'd have a consultant do the grant application like we're doing currently for Iron Bridge, where we'd have to pay the consultant fee for that, which right now for like Iron Bridge is ten, eleven thousand dollars. It'd be that same exact scenario, but we don't know that yet either if we're selected. This is just to get us into the next round to see if we get picked or not. But I just wanted to at least make you aware of that as well.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, you have a quick update on construction projects? They're all done.
Hey.
DOT did their inspection, punch list check yesterday on our one hundred and eighty-fourth bridge. There's only two very easy outstanding items to take care of. So, that'll get, we'll take care of that. That'll get finished. And the day labor on two seventy-fifth is open and.
I did talk to somebody that kind of grew fond of that, being a dead end road. They were a little disappointed, could open back up.
But you don't quite get as much traffic.
Exactly.
I mean, could have probably managed, I could speak for a snowplow operator on that road if it's our greater. He's probably thankful that'll be open rather than having to turn around, but yeah, probably gets easier because you have no traffic. All summer or a good chunk of summer. But that's all done.
Well, good. Yeah, I mean, we did have some tremendous winds in the last couple of weeks. I don't know if that affected any of the, what was finished product look like or anything like that, but I heard there was some touching up going on.
Yeah, we had to re-mulch a good portion of the project because of those winds last Wednesday, Wednesday night. Opened up a lot of bare ground or removed a lot of the mulch, blew it away and had a lot of exposed ground and seed again. So, I had to get re-mulched, but that has been completed.
I come across Hill Davenport, we're coming south after that meeting and it was like, uh, somebody was throwing thousands of snowballs at my car. I just like corn collar, just trashing it from one side.
And I know we've gotten some requests from property owners about corn debris, I'll call it, from fields and harvests. No blocking, culverts and stuff. So, our guys have been taking care of that in case if we get snow and it melts to open up the culvert or drainage ways. But yeah, the wind is, it was vicious.
I did have a call I referred on to you. Yeah. All right. Anything else for Jayden? Thank you.
Yep.
Well, it's snow Wednesday.
Like that four letter.
Nah, nah, nah.
They're calling up to a trace for us or something, minus one, what? They're calling up to a tracer.
Yeah, not much.
See ya.
All right then. Any visitors or citizens, either present or online, that would like to approach the board this morning? Here for other reasons? So, Lisa?
I know Laura's outside.
Oh, is she?
So, I mean, I, mine won't take long, but probably by the time, by the time you call Laura, Laurie down, I'll be done.
Yeah, we'll do it.
So, I just need a motion to approve the minutes of the December third, twenty twenty-four board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in crucial newspapers.
Motion to check and prove the minutes of December third, board proceedings and published as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve unauthorized the chair's signature on the certificate of substantial completion with builders effective September twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Stronghold Industries effective November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Kraus Plumbing and Heating effective October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Geesler Brothers effective August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Rock River Electric effective September twentieth, twenty twenty-four. And Midwest Automatic Fire Sprinkler effective September twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Okay.
Second. Motion in second to approve, uh, and to have the board's signature on the certificate of substantial completion for the companies provided. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you. Luanne?
Did you call Lori about the changes too?
I emailed her. Good morning.
Morning.
What I have for you today is the calendar. Three thirty this afternoon is a Coca-Cola River Water Management Authority Meeting, Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. Tomorrow, Wednesday, December eleventh at nine AM is Don's turn and just talk on KMAQ. Four PM tomorrow is Veterans Affairs Commission meeting in the community room downstairs for any of you. And also four o'clock is the Ports of Eastern Iowa Authority Meeting. Nin has been going to those, I think, and I'm not sure if they're providing Zoom information for that. I haven't seen it yet. Thursday, December twelfth at eleven AM is a Jackson County Area Tourism Association meeting by Zoom for any of you and Mike usually attends those. Also at eleven o'clock, take the tentative out of that, there will be Mississippi Valley Workforce Business Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. Friday, December thirteenth at eleven AM is a Seventh Judicial District Advisory Committee meeting in Davenport for Nin. Monday, December sixteenth, the Waste Authority meeting is been canceled. They're not meeting again until January twentieth, so you can cross that off. At three PM Monday afternoon is the Jackson County Compensation Board's second meeting in the community room for any of you that want to attend.
First meeting. For the canceled first meeting.
This is the, no.
They didn't meet before.
Oh, okay. So, it's just the first meeting. Okay, all right. I think I've been gone.
It's all good.
All right. So, anyway, that will be at three o'clock on Monday afternoon. Also at three o'clock is an Eastern Iowa Mental Health and Disability Services meeting in Davenport for Jack. And Nin is the alternate for that. Six o'clock Monday evening is a zoning commission meeting for any of you that want to attend that. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, December seventeenth at five PM. And that evening at five o'clock will be the Conservation Board meeting in Hurstville for any of you that want to go to that. And December seventeenth will be our last meeting for this twenty twenty-four. We will not be meeting the week of Christmas and we won't meet again in January until January second. It's a required meeting day, so we will be meeting that day.
And the second, so swear in too, is that correct?
Yes, correct. On that Thursday.
Good. Any questions for Luanne?
Nope.
Where is the Ports of Eastern Iowa meeting?
They've been zooming in.
Just on Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this time, we'll take a short recess.
All right.
We will reconvene our meeting at this time and joined by Lori Rolling and Laura Carson's for the, um, to discuss the ordinance, new ordinance, update of the ordinance. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi.
Hi. So, what's new and where are we at?
Well, it looks like John Case has looked over the, the contract that ECI put together for the development of rewriting the ordinance and was okay with it. So, it's back to you guys to, to be signed, should you guys choose to go forward with it.
I did stop down, talked to John after our meeting and, and he looked it over. He didn't have really any concerns as far as what path we're going or what would. Um, I know we briefly talked about budgets and I believe you said you had money in your budget for this fiscal year?
I do.
Okay. For the total of the nine or the half?
I have half.
So, have next half and the next fiscal year.
Yep, we have to budget that in for the next year.
Laura, you said ECI was okay with us doing it that way.
Yes, the board from this in November.
So, you've already started and I will have to pay for that part already.
I don't charge anything until I start working on the project and that means the contract has to be agreed. So, that's why, what we're doing here today. We have the same kind of grant funding that is providing half the match.
Sure.
We also have membership fees that communities pay and so we provide service through those.
So, we also talked about, I'm sorry. We also talked about like the ordinances coming up, maybe it's separate from whether it be battery storage, whether it be solar, whether it be wind, winds, uh, data center, da, da, da. So, they would be separate from.
That's my recommendation.
Yeah.
Yes. We created a pretty tight scope and tended to create a more user friendly, uh, more easier to administer, easier.
Well, we certainly need to be up to date and then something that we can go to our website and find quick enough and, and understand it.
It also leaves those other items to progress at their own rate.
Right.
Their own schedule, um, and there are issues to be discussed on this and we can focus on that one and those other units.
Any other questions for Lori or Laura?
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second to approve moving forward with the update of the zoning ordinance and the contract with ECIA as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah. Have a good holiday.
Thanks, you too.
Have you also touched base with Becky?
Just texted her.
Oh, I got my phone by then. Yeah. You okay with the recess there, IT?
We want to.
Yeah.
You got other reports or any, any other business before us?
I would say.
Who are gonna start that work session yet? No? Oh, it says.
Thanks. Becky's on her way.
Any other reports for, um, I guess. We were all three at the District Six meeting at, in Dubuque, uh, last Wednesday. And talk went very well. There was a lot of input, uh, legislators. We had a fair amount of legislators there and they got grilled a little bit and um, our Road Superintendent Rick Kilmer and Clinton County's Road Superintendent Jeff Oster were there for a presentation, um, on our reclaim process. So, it went very well, I thought, and had good reviews when we were done and I, I don't know. Any other comments on our meeting?
It was very well. And like you said, everybody kind of chimed in, asked a lot of questions. Some areas were like, well, we don't really have a big issue there because we're more flat than what we are, obviously. But I think it was a good presentation.
Different input. We had a good turnout, I think, you know, as far as district meetings go. You try to essentially locate some of them meetings, but it's hard to do when you get, you're, you're working with sixteen counties and everybody's got something to do. So, um, well, well, I thought. Any other reports we'd like to report on? If not, Becky Chapin is here with Director of Human Resources, our Personnel Matters. Good morning.
Good morning.
Your festive today.
I am festive today. Today is the best of Dr. Hook in the Box Day. You must have missed the memo. There's a couple more days. You guys have a couple more opportunities to be festive. Um, so I'm here today.
Oh, it was on my calendar, dress up day. I didn't know what it meant. So, I said, also said jean game.
It did. Did you wear jeans and stuff?
No.
Can't see. That was action too. We're doing a food drive for Feed the Need. So, one of the things was that just, um, just to kind of put a little bit of fun into it. So, today, that's gonna be today through the eighteenth.
Okay.
Today through the eighteenth, the box will get delivered, um, next Wednesday at nine. They're gonna meet us, so. Yep. Not bearishable foods collected in the front vestibule. Oh, yeah.
Nice gesture.
Yep. But we just have a couple of staffing changes. Um, the Sheriff's Department has still had a part-time vacancy yet to fill in the jail. Um, they did make an offer and hired Gabriel Dotson. He's from Bellevue. So, I would ask for a motion to approve the hiring of Gabriel Dotson as a part-time corrections officer effective December sixth, twenty twenty-four at an hourly rate of twenty-one forty-one, including authorizing the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks for the same.
Very good.
Motion in a second to approve the hiring of Gabriel Dotson, um, as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries.
And then the Sheriff's Department has also filled one of the part-time security positions here in the courthouse, which is now considered a bailiff position due to the need. Um, they will escort prisoners a little bit more and keep them in their care more when they're in court, depending on staffing levels at the jail.
Like PRN?
Um, they've always, they're actually, they're technically PRN, but they are scheduled opposite days of when our permanent staff, um, take off. So, they have always been considered part-time. They're not benefit eligible unless they're part-time twenty hours per week regularly. So, for that reason, they have always been considered a part-time position. Um, but they are considered a bailiff position now. So, I would ask for a motion to approve the hiring of Andrew Frederickson as a part-time bailiff effective December sixth, twenty twenty-four at an hourly rate of twenty-five thirty-five per hour, including authorizing the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks for the same. Almost.
Very good.
I have a motion in a second to approve the hiring of Andrew Frederickson as a part-time bailiff um, effective September sixth of twenty-four. Any other discussion? Is there another job description included with the bailiff position or is that just kind of?
We updated the security position to include some of the duties, so yes.
Okay.
Yep. All of the security officers now, um, will be jail certified. They previously haven't done that. Um, but they will do that, so they meet their requirements to have the.
So, do we have to send Andy away for jail certification?
Um, so Andy has to update his CEUs because he was already certified. So, Andrew worked for us in two thousand fifteen for three years as a jailer and then he worked as a bailiff for Clinton County. So, he's got his, uh, jail school, the basics. So, he'll update his. And, um, Gabriel had his certification done through the Animal State Penitentiary, so he may have to update CEUs, but they will bend jail certified.
Andrew, long do that.
Yes. Yep. Yep.
Oh, any other questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries.
And Andy did work yesterday, so I know Joel took him around, or Friday and yesterday, and they're doing a chip and round to some of the offices. I don't know if you hit everyone to get him in the production or if you have a chance to meet him, but we'll be sure to get him around to make sure he's, everybody's got a familiar face with him.
Good.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we'll see you before the holidays, right?
Right.
All right. Okay. So, are there any other, um, board reports or anything else to be right before the?
Did attend the, um, I was held over at Innovate one twenty, the childcare, um, workshop that's been going on to try to. And it was very interesting. That was last Friday. Kind of talked about, um, the survey that went out that was done by Kelly Brown. And, um, what's needed in the area, they kind of broke the community up between kind of up north was an area, city of Macokona or surrounding areas and then Preston Miles, Sebula. And what was out there and different areas that could be helpful? Like, do we need to expand on centers that are already there? Do we need to look at maybe in the future, building new centers? Is there a way that companies in the area can help, um, with a benefit to their employees, like with a childcare? Or, and they brought in a lady that showed several different ways that different areas are doing things. One of them is like a company secures ten spots in a center, whether they have ten employees using it or not. But that way, that center knows it for sure has that financial support there. Um, some some, some areas, the company itself is building the center to work for their company first. And I know there's one of them going up in Dubuque where it's basically geared towards one business. Their employees get to use it first. After that, they will open it up to outside services coming in. I think from the result, it said like we were a thousand slots short, but that can vary from this day or this day that, so they're not really missing. There's not really a thousand kids in, in Jackson County sitting there with no daycare type of deal, you know? But just the way they did the survey, it shows that there is a need for more childcare in the area, as we all know. And that can hinder other businesses coming into the community for a new business to the Jackson County area. So, that's one of the driving forces of why they're trying to do this. So, there's kind of a, a core group of people and they're looking at, like I said, different things on, do we need more home care? Do we need center-based care? Do we need? What is the actual need that would work best for the community? And each community is a little bit different. So, we'll meet again in January and kind of, and this is kind of an ongoing, like a five-year process. We do have three centers in the Macokona area that are looking at some type of expansion right now. Um, a lot of it is staffing shortage also. So, the Preston Miles area actually got certified to take on more kids, but now they gotta get the staffing to be able to do that, so.
It's a vicious circle and it's a, it's a huge problem. I mean, you go, you talk to these young people, they're going, it's anywhere from twenty to twenty-five thousand a year for one to two kids, you know? And, and what happens, you know, like I said, in the vicious circle is they're just gonna stay home, take care of the kids, which you lose workforce again.
And in that survey, it talked about, you know, are you quitting your job to stay home during the child, child's growing period there? Are you looking at not having any more kids just because you can't find childcare, you know? And that's a scary thought that you're.
Or the financial responsibility to it, you know?
You're limiting kind of your life and your goals because you can't find childcare. Or another part of it was how many people aren't working in their desired field? So, maybe what they went to college for or what they truly want to do because they can't find childcare for the hours that are committed to that field, so. So, they're settling basically lesser job than what they really desire because of that issue. So, that was very interesting.
It is an issue, no doubt. So, any other business before the board this morning? We do have a couple of work sessions to go through yet, so we'll do them after our board meeting, as we normally do. I have a motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carry, meeting adjourned. Thank you.